...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Board members, in the absence of Mr. Chernahoy, who is the clerk of the board, I would like to recommend appointing Tom Holland to serve in that role. So if there is, would be a formal motion to appoint him in that role, that would be great.
Madam President, I move to nominate Tom Holland as clerk for this evening.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Holland, for your service. All right. We are on that, on section four of our agenda this evening. I'm, I'm sorry, I missed a step. We need to approve our agenda first. Backing up, item number three, board members, you have the agenda in front of you. If someone would be kind enough to move approval of tonight's agenda.
Madam President, move to approve the agenda.
All right, motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we are on item four of the agenda. Sandy, this is our recognition section.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask Jody Youngman to come up to the mic. Jody is an art teacher in the district. She serves both Willow River and Holton. And Jody has received the 2010-11 Artsonia's Annual Leadership Award, an honor extended to teachers from only ten schools per state across the United States. So a very small number of teachers are recognized. It honors teachers who go beyond the classroom walls to encourage family and community involvement in arts education. And she has an online gallery. Can you tell she's a busy person? Her, the online art gallery that was created ranks number one in the state and number sixty-three in the nation for the number of postings. And I've asked Jody to share a little bit what it talks about, goes beyond the classroom walls to encourage family and community involvement. What, what kinds of things she's been bringing to the district.
Well, when they talk about that, they're talking about how their site encourages people to become fan clubs for the children. And it also encourages them to leave comments for the children's artwork and for the children to leave their own artist statements.
So we're very pleased to have this honor brought to the district. We know our community highly supports the arts. And this is just another kind of feather in our cap for both Jody and the district as far as our continued support for arts education.
Thanks, Jody, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have fall athletics. And we had another great season that we want to share with you. This evening, to assist us in sharing athletics making progress, we have Josh Dardine and Rachel Kanoki, who will come up to the mic and share the good news.
A little bit about Josh and myself. We are athletes making progress. We are leaders of the group that is advised by Mrs. DeVos. A little bit about AMP. It's formed by all Hudson High School athletes and people within the theater and concert groups of band and choir. We encourage and promote positive sportsmanship throughout the school, school athletics and school events throughout the seasons and throughout the year. We will now move on to recognizing this year's fall sports. Coast Country Team could not be here tonight. They had their banquet tonight, but their coach sent over their highlights of the season. As for the boys team, the, they placed fourth at sectional and advancing Ryan Cromer at state, who placed fourth out of one hundred and ninety runners with a time of fifteen forty-eight. As for the girls, Katie Whatstein advanced to state and placed ninth. And the girls' coast country team all placed sixth at state as a team. We will now have the boys soccer team with Andy Harmon and Seth Blum.
I just want to wish our swimmers the very best as they move on to state. That's, that's quite remarkable. And they really have, have stretched themselves and represented our school well.
I am Seth Blum, this is Andy Harmon, and we're the boys soccer team captains. The boys soccer team had a strong finish to an up and down season with nine sophomores and only one senior. We were a young team to start the year. We'd struggled winning games at the beginning. After extremely tough stretch of non-conference games around Labor Day, including games against Stillwater and Brookfield East, two of the teams ranked top five all season in Minnesota and Wisconsin. The team came together with a strong second half in the season. Second half of the season, we were eight and four record, including five and one to end of the year. The highlight of the year was our regional final against Oakley Memorial, ending their three-year run at state tournament qualification. It was a huge win for our program and testament to commitment shown by all the team on this long season. In order to regional championship, five players were recognized with all conference honors. Junior captain Rocky Harmon was first team all-conference player. Sophomore Alex Schnobruck received second team conference all-conference honors. And sophomore Ben Cluett and juniors Alex Boss and Henry Burrows were all conference honorable mention. With a young team, we're excited for next season to continue growing and thank you for support.
Up next, we've got girls golf. Representing that, we've got Cassie Worm and Leisha Corey.
Hi, I'm Cassie Worm, and this is Leisha Corey, and we are representing girls golf team. This year, we started out, we have a young team with one senior and the rest juniors and sophomores and freshmen. We started out our season in the four twenties as our team score and moved to three seventy-five. We ended up taking third at regionals to move on to sectionals where we had the opportunity to play in lacrosse. And we also, what else? We took second at conference. And I managed to move on to state where I took twenty-fourth out of seventy-nine girls. So that concludes our season, thank you for your support.
Up next, we've got boys football. And representing that, we've got Coach Cowles, Luke Miller and Derek Campbell.
Thanks for having us here tonight. I want to recognize our captains here, Derek Campbell, Luke Miller, Tyler Smerson, Tucker Malika. You know, we had a lot of great senior leadership this year. We, we finished up the season six and three. And I played, I think we played the toughest schedule in the state. You know, two of the teams were, are still playing in the final four that we played non-conference. Menominee's still playing, we beat them. You know, so I, I think we, we took on a tough schedule and it's because of these guys, what these guys wanted to do. You know, they, they decided a long time ago as freshmen and sophomores, even though they struggled a little bit, they, they really said, hey, let's, let's, let's be the best we can possibly be on the field, off the field, in the classroom, do everything the right way. And these guys really were great leaders for us. So we did a nice year, six and three, made the playoffs for the fourth time in the last five years. And, you know, a few of the highlights, the homecoming win. We were four and oh at home, just, you know, because of the tremendous support we have. I wish we could play every game at home. Because our crowd is phenomenal and we, and we're so appreciative for the support we have in, in the community and, and from the, from the school district. And, you know, we had, we, we won the Little Brown Jug against River Falls for the third year in a row. So things are, things are going well. I, I feel like we could, we could play with anybody in the state this year. And, you know, we just fell a little short. And, but, but I think when these guys look back on it, they're going to, they're going to be pretty proud of the season they had. And, you know, we, we just are thankful for the opportunity we have to, to do what we do, to be in, in athletics, to, you know, for all the students that are involved in the arts, for all the students that are involved in other clubs. We think it's great to be a part of something, you know, be a part of anything and, and to do great things and then keep working hard at, at what we're doing. So thank you so much for having us tonight.
Congratulations.
Up next, we've got girls swimming. And representing them is Katie Wees, Megan Haney and Amanda Baker.
Hi, we're the captains of the swim team, Amanda, Megan and Katie. This season has been really good. We have, we won all of our dual meets except for one. And in Hudson history, one, we won our first two invites, major invites.
And at conference, we finished second. And then sectionals, we also finished second. And that's our first time in Hudson history finishing second at sectionals. At sectionals, our, our freshman Devon Seeca took two sectional championships in the two hundred and the five hundred. Our medley relay took second and also advanced to state. And our four hundred freestyle relay took first, took sectional champion and is advancing to state. And then Amanda took first in diving and is also advancing to state. So we are sending seven girls to state this season. It's been a very good season for us. And we thank you all for supporting us and listening.
And next, we've got girls volleyball. And representing it is Maddie Druski and Steph Little.
Hi, I'm Maddie Druski, and this is Steph Little. The varsity volleyball team finished the season with a record of nineteen and twenty-nine overall, one and five in the Big Rivers Conference for a sixth place finish. The team finished second in our home tournament, fourteenth out of thirty at the Menominee sprawl, fourth out of twelve, twelve at Mora. And although our record wasn't as good as we showed, the team was always just a few plays short from making a loss a win.
We had leads late in many sets, but we just couldn't hang on to the win. Even with the losses, the girls played hard right up to the end of the season. The team had a lot of fun together and we had several, several different, several of the references, referees commented about how nice it was to do our matches because the girls were polite, hardworking, and really seemed to understand the game and looked like they enjoyed playing.
Our all-conference second team Raider representatives were Steph Little and Katrina Zenz, and honorable mention was myself. Thank you for your support.
Up next, we've got girls tennis. And representing it is Casey Fall and Morgan Van Allen.
Hi, I'm Casey Fall, and this is Morgan Van Allen. We are two of the captains of the tennis team, but so is Rachel. My tennis partner Jenny Fastfinder could not make it tonight, but she's basically also another captain of the team. This season, the tennis team went, it was like seventeen and like five, seven. Oh, it is? Well, there we go, seventeen and seven. So that's pretty, it's pretty good, especially for, this year, we had six seniors leave last year. And so we were, we were thinking that this year was going to be a rebuilding year, but we actually did very well. And so that was really exciting. We had three girls go on to state, including me, Morgan, and then my partner Jenny. Jenny and I made it to the third round in state. Morgan made it to the second round. And she's the only singles player in Hudson history to make it past the first round. So that is really impressive. Is that it?
We made, went second at the all-conference and then second at sectionals. So we haven't done that in a while, too. So yeah, thanks for supporting us.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And as we wrap up, we'd like to thank again you guys for your continuous support of our athletics and of our community. And we look forward to seeing our results from our winter sports.
So Josh and Rachel, will we see you periodically introducing Hudson's sports?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. We look forward to seeing you again. All right, we are at the superintendent's report on the agenda, Mary.
I just want to recognize all those athletes that just walked out of here. I said swimming because that was our most recent, but certainly they represent many other athletes who we're very proud of. And their accomplishments are something that they will benefit from throughout life in being involved in sports, in our team sports. So congratulations to all of you and the rest of the students that you represent in each and every sport that we have. All right, moving on, on the agenda to, this evening I have the honor of talking about two recognitions that we have just recently received word of. One is a national recognition and one is a state recognition. We received word that we have been named the second year in a row, in fact, an AP District of the Year on the annual honor roll. This is certainly a huge recognition of the district and the efforts, our efforts, kindergarten, early childhood through grade twelve. And certainly our AP teachers are here, and Laura's going to introduce them in just a minute. Our Hudson High School offers thirteen AP courses. We had a report about that just last meeting. We had three hundred and ten students last year, took four hundred and eighty-one tests in the May of, in May of two thousand and eleven. And our passing rate was just over seventy-nine percent. The reason we've received this recognition for the second year in a row is based on their criteria, a couple of things of their criteria. They look at data from two thousand and nine through two thousand and eleven. And the college board also looks at an increase in participation rate, which we certainly have had, and Sandy highlighted last month. And one of the other areas that puts us in this group of recognized district is the performance level of our students and their passing rate. And so if you increase your passing rate by three percent or higher than you had in two thousand and nine, you would be on this list. But you also get on this list, and really, it's not about three percent for us. It's if you're over seventy percent of the passing rate, then that qualifies us. And we are certainly well over that. And so they, they identify seventy percent passing rate, and Hudson's well, well over that. So we should be very proud of that. There are a total of three hundred and sixty-seven districts across the country and, including Canada, who have been recognized, received this recognition. That's down about twenty districts from last year when we were on the list. And if we look at that in relationship to how many districts are in the state of Wisconsin? So four hundred and twenty-five districts in the state of Wisconsin. And Hudson is one of three hundred and sixty-seven in the country that's being recognized for our AP results. And for, if we just looked at those districts that have been recognized two years in a row, that number drops to a hundred and thirteen districts in the nation. So Hudson is one of a hundred and thirteen in the, in the nation. And if we look at districts in Wisconsin that have achieved that recognition two years in a row, there are five of them. So Hudson is one of five in Wisconsin for recognition two years in a row. So I'd invite Laura, I love the principal, to come forward and to introduce our AP teachers, our advanced placement teachers, who certainly have helped their students learn at these high levels. Laura?
Okay, can the AP teachers come up here? And I'll introduce those who are here first, and then we'll talk about the others who were unable to make it tonight. And while they're coming forward, as you know, we've reported on our SMART goal, which is very much related to the honor that we've received here. The SMART goal is that there will be a ten percent increase in the total number of AP exams taken from May of two thousand and ten to May, or, sorry, May of two thousand and eleven to May of two thousand and twelve. And the percent of students passing the AP exams will remain at eighty percent or better. In addition, some of the actions we are taking are to ensure that the right students are signing up for AP courses, students who may not have in the past considered themselves AP quality but are demonstrating that they could achieve passing scores and success in the AP courses. So these are four of our AP teachers who have been teaching multiple years at Hudson High School and really are the reason that we're performing well and also the reason that more and more kids want to take these courses. Their teachers are excellent. Starting from your left is Ann White, and Ann teaches AP Spanish. And next to Ann is Vicki McLaughlin, and Vicki teaches AP Physics and AP Chemistry. Both of them, and both of them are lab classes, so there are multiple periods in a day that Vicki teaches AP. And then John Ammon is one of our AP teachers of AP US History. The other AP US History teacher is Jay Cluess, who could not be here tonight. John's been teaching for multiple years and has been nominated for the Cole Fellowship, partly because of his AP excellence and because of his work in the nation for reading AP exams. So thanks to John. And Jason Swavely is on the far right. And Jason teaches AP Psychology along with Bob Smith. And Jason teaches five sections of AP Psychology. And again, because of the great job that Jason did, our sections in AP Psych grew from five to seven sections of AP Psych. So congratulations to those who are here. The other AP teachers, Chuck Bublitz teaches AP German. Matt Friedel teaches AP Government, and this will be the third year of that course. And we've expanded it from a semester to a year, just this year. Lori Harmon just began teaching AP Literature and Composition. Steve Kennedy just began teaching a new course we offered this year, AP Language and Composition. Steve Cosman has been teaching AP Calculus for many, many years and very successfully. Mary McClinsky teaches AP Art, and that's studio art. Those students have to present their portfolios and a very different style of AP. Steve Solom is teaching AP Statistics, and this is the first year that we're offering AP Statistics onsite. And I believe all of the rest of the AP teachers were here. So congratulations to them and also to the teachers who have prepared them for AP classes before those AP classes.
Thanks, Laura.
The next award or recognition is for Hudson Middle School. And I see Dan Koch, the principal, back there in the back. They have been named once again an exemplary middle school and by the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators. They are recognized for their achievement in, in math on the Wisconsin WKCE, Wisconsin Knowledge and Concept Exams, being in the top ten percent. And I know we just recently had a report from Director Sandy Kovac on our WKCE scores. And the middle school's achievement, when we look at the composite score of being the second in a group of larger middle schools throughout the state. So even though our middle school is challenged with the number of students and the capacity of the building being overcapacity, significantly overcapacity, the middle school teachers continue to help our students learn at high levels. And this is another recognition of, of that fact. This award and recognition entitles the middle school to apply for a higher level award called the Middle School of Excellence Award. And you will remember in two thousand and ten that Hudson Middle School achieved that award at that time. So I believe Dan and his school will be applying once more. They have a lot to be proud of that they can recognize within that award and recognize that as they submit this application to the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators. They will be recognized in a number of publications as achieving this level of recognition. So congratulations to Dan, to the other administrators and to his team of teachers who have helped our students learn. I just have a couple other comments. You know, we've talked this evening about a national award and a state award, recognizing the efforts of our students certainly and our educators who help support them along the way. And that has occurred because of an early childhood through grade twelve system of learning that we've put in place in Hudson to have all of our students achieving at higher levels. And I certainly compliment all of our educators as we look forward to National Education Week next week and to the Board of Education for supporting that system for learning that has supported these kind of recognitions and achievement by our students.
Thanks, Mary. We are moving into the reports section of the agenda this evening. And we have two items in that section related to land acquisition. And it looks like, Tim, you're going to lead us through both sets of discussions?
That's right. I'm going to have Sam Stotts from Hoffman come up to the table. Sam is a project leader, project manager with Hoffman. And as part of our process to continue our due diligence and looking at and moving through the purchase agreement for St. Croix Meadows Dog Track, we did say that we would come back to you with a report on the potential usability of the building. And so Sam has been out there. He's had some other members of his team out at the site reviewing and looking at the building and the structure itself. And so with that, I'm going to let Sam take it and talk a little bit about what, what they found.
And Sam, as you get started, if you want to pull that microphone real close and make sure the button is up so your honor are capturing you.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Thanks for having me here. As Tim mentioned, we did conduct a preliminary study of the existing facility. The intent of this was to identify, as you can see in the report, the structural integrity and potential reuse of the St. Croix Meadows Racing Facility or the dog track, as I'll refer to it here. As you can read through, we did find the building does seem to be very structurally sound and would have some potential reuse for that. It is a twenty-year-old facility that has been vacated for ten years. So with that, it's going to obviously have some different deferred maintenance that would have to be taken care of. So we listed some of those things, and those would be things that would have to be addressed should the building be reused for a school. It does, again, as I've said, appeal, appear structurally sound. So the shell of the structure would not have to be altered in any way unless the design would require that. Some of the challenges that would come with it, that would have actually challenges, but I believe they could be opportunities for advantages as well. There's a number of different areas that are open right now because that was desirable for that design. If those were to be filled in, they would create very inexpensive reuse and some additional square footage if you would just fill those spaces in. So because of that, it is a code issue that could be for smoke partitions, things like that. You might need to address that. But it could be actually an advantage to gain some inexpensive square footage for a school facility should those be able to be reused. Some other advantages that could be from that site would be some salvage, salvageability of the existing materials, the concrete. And I mentioned in the report that we have had a project that has been able to reuse concrete. And if you go out onto the site, there isn't a lot of concrete on that site that if it's not used or would not be applicable which. Obviously, there would be a number of different things that would have to be considered before you would be finalizing any sort of deconstruction. But we have saved over a hundred thousand dollars in just crushing concrete and being able to use that for structural fills. So there's some advantages to that. But really, the biggest advantage that comes with that facility is I put some numbers together and some thought into what it would take if you would renovate. And we just completed, Hoffman has just completed some renovation projects that were, I would consider full gut and remodels. We had to redo walls, we had to replace HVAC systems, we had to address any fire sprinkler that needed to be added, which again would be similar to this building. It does have sprinkler system in it, but I'm certain it would have to be modified as you obviously change the design of the interior. So similar type facilities, we believe you could save probably anywhere compared to a new construction, anywhere from fifty to seventy-five dollars. And that's a realistic conservative estimate, if that makes sense. If, if you were to reuse ninety thousand square feet, which we believe of the ninety thou, or of the approximately hundred and forty-three thousand square feet of the facility, there's a section that's that tiered seating that would be a challenge, to say the least, to try to use that. Not impossible, but for the purposes of this, again, trying to be conservative, we said, let's say you can't reuse that, and you would have to do something with that or maybe deconstruct it or something that it could not be reusable. Even if you were only to use the ninety thousand square feet, you would still have a potential savings of about four and a half million to six point seven five million if you take that fifty to seventy-five bucks a square foot. So you can see that's some, that's some real cost savings versus building new construction. Because of that, we believe that it would be feasible or would be reasonable to start engaging some local contractors and consultants to really start to validate some information that would be required to continue and going into the next steps, which are referred to in the in the summary as well, under the next steps. So with that, without reading the report verbatim, is there any questions on anything that anyone has?
Questions on the board?
Madam President. Yes. Sam, just, I know I tried making some notes as I was reading this, but you referred to buildings being structurally sound, and I'm certainly encouraged to hear that we could, you know, possibly reap some potential savings. But I do know that going through the executive summary, they're mentioning about some considerable corrosion on framings, cracks in walls. Talk to me a little bit about that, because that, you know, that doesn't sound good. That doesn't sound like something I would equate with, you know, structural stability. But can you tell me about that?
The items that are referred to in the report, the engineer, I apologize, could not be here tonight, but I'll do my best to answer that. The engineer thought that the building is structurally sound, that it does not mean that it's perfect and things would have to be addressed as part of a remodel if there are things from leakage. And that's mentioned in the report, that there are some things that we would need to identify. Those are some of the next steps, I think, to verify the extent. That's the reason why I'm saying the conservative estimates right now are probably the way you want to go. You don't want to say you're going to save $75 to $100 a square foot when you have some things like that that you would need to address, because that's going to take some costs. Therefore, the cost savings per square foot was actually reduced to make sure that we can have something, and therefore some wiggle room, if you will, if there's going to be some structural integrity that needs to be addressed as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does, Sam. And this is, you know, really kind of above my pay grade here when I start talking about this. But so the sense that I want to understand, I guess, is these cracks that are in the walls, or this corrosion on the framing can be adequately addressed?
That we can have complete assurances that this building is solid?
I believe so. I don't believe that there's anything right now that's indicating that this building is going to need to be deconstructed entirely. It definitely has a lot of things that can be saved. That does limit, you know, some of the things you would have to do. You'd have to make sure that you've got your spaces designed within those. So there are some disadvantages. But because of the cost savings, and again, being conservative in nature, there's a substantial amount of potential savings that could be reaped if you are able to save all of that 90,000 square feet.
All right. Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Tom?
Sam, you mentioned that I'm interested in the tiered location of the facility, the tiered seating, which makes up the rest of the square footage of the facility, of the 140?
Correct.
It sounded like you said it wasn't impossible, but can you give me any ideas to the feasibility of reconstructing that?
Sure. When you, I was actually just in there again tonight. When you stand there, there is probably a good 25 to 30 feet that you may be able to get some head height or head clearance until you would have to take some accessibility where you would have to start ramping down, because the upper tier starts coming down into it. I'm not a designer. I do know the head heights would be a challenge to go clear from where it's a flat story, if you will, down to the tiered stories. There's probably about 12 feet in drop from where the first level is down to the ground level by the track. That's going to be a challenge accessibility-wise to maintain accessibility to those lower levels. But there's definitely an opportunity to look at that. But again, what I did is, for the purpose of this, is we excluded it in its entirety and said, let's just assume we can't use it so that we're not artificially inflating the cost benefit.
I imagine the change, or the reconstruction of that particular area would be more expensive in its nature because of its design.
Very true. So. It would add a number of different challenges that would add cost to that, and the savings probably wouldn't be the $50 to $75.
Yeah. I'd heard that initially the thought was maybe a third of the facility might be usable at 90,000, maybe I misunderstood. This sounds closer to 2/3.
I think it's a fair statement, and Catherine Crookshank is the one who we worked from Hoffman. You may remember Catherine from Rivercrest here as well. But she put together some very basic preliminary concepts of, okay, what could be used? And again, those are preliminary in nature, but we don't see any reason why, without some, with some creativity, why you couldn't use the majority of the three floors that are level, we'll say, instead of the tiered.
Last little comment here. This analysis was just done on the building at this point. We haven't done any kind of a cost savings analysis on the property itself in terms of parking and stuff, which I would assume would be used as is, almost.
Actually, I appreciate you bringing that up. Some of the thought has gone into the site cost. If you were to use that site, it's obviously been designed for a large capacity of people, both the traffic flow and the infrastructure, meaning the utilities, water, gas, electric, all that's coming into it. So there would be some significant savings potentially from that as well, considering that the site was designed for a large capacity of people. That would need to be verified. And again, all the more reason why we do believe there's adequate reason to maybe take that next step and start engaging some local help to start validating and solidifying what those savings could be.
Other questions? Mark?
There we go. Sam, I just, I did find one of my notes from earlier. I'm referring to on page four where it talks about observation structural. And just as here, no information was found in architectural drawings concerning loads used to design the building, nor information regarding soil bearing pressures used to design the foundation systems. I found that, I guess, to be rather troubling in a building that's only 20 years old. Why, I guess, why don't we have that information?
It wasn't made available to us at the time of this study. It is, I'm sure, available. It was not made available to us at the time of the study. So Mark Spielbaugh, the engineer that walked through, has done this literally hundreds of times in buildings. He did not have a copy of the plans available. That would be one of the things we would suggest in the next steps, is to obviously try to get a copy of anything that we can on that existing facility so that we can then further determine exactly what are the size of the members, what are the loads, what are the possibilities. But at the time of this report, those plans were not available.
Okay. But that would be critical information, wouldn't it, Sam?
Yes, it would.
Yes. We have, unfortunately, the timing was, when they went in the building, we didn't have that available. In subsequent discussions with the owners of the property, we do know where we have some access to those drawings now. I can't tell you exactly what they are. We haven't reviewed all of them yet, but we do have drawings that will be helpful going forward, Mark.
Okay. Good. Just, in fact, just one more question. This is a 20-year-old building. So is the corrosion that I referenced earlier in the cracks, would that be something, I guess, that would, you know, maybe be typically found, say, in a building that had been under some neglect and having a leaking roof?
Absolutely. I don't think that that's going to be abnormal. Mark Spielbaugh, again, would be able to better test of that, but I trust Mark's judgment in when he says it's structurally sound, that it's not something that's beyond repair.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions for you, Sam. So the leaking and some of the corrosion and potentially even the cracks, that is all a function of the roof issues that exist?
The, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it all function of the roof, or are there other things going on that are causing some of the items that you identified in the executive summary?
It's a good question. I wouldn't be able to speculate without Mark, again, his input, but I don't believe it would all be from a roof leak. The corrosion and the leaks, obviously, would be tied together.
Right.
But the cracking and stuff could be just, there's always going to be some differential settling in a building. And a buildings typically are designed, obviously, to have that. So we didn't believe that this was going to impact the potential reuse. Obviously, there are ways to address it if it's settling beyond a measure that's not acceptable. That would have to be addressed and would be part of what those measures would be that would obviously cost some dollars that wouldn't, and why I put $50 to $75 savings and created that.
And is it right to say, having read through this, it seemed to me that the, some of the cracking and the corrosion and stuff was limited? I mean, it wasn't pervasive throughout the building as you did the walkthrough?
That's correct.
Okay. And then last question. What's happened with the roof, I assume this is just a rubber membrane, and it's just shrinking and cracking, which is resulting in the leakage that you're seeing?
Yeah. A 20-year lifespan on a roof is pretty typical. And it does, Mark actually, I think, mentioned somewhere in there as well, pretty, with the expected lifespan of a roof of that, it's a 45 mil rubber membrane.
It is.
And that's probably especially if there's been some neglect to it, and hasn't been upkept, you're going to have some wear, and it would just make sense to replace it if there is going to be a reuse.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head what the area of that roof is?
It would, I don't know exactly, but I would speculate. Give me a second for some math. 50,000 to 60,000 square feet, somewhere in there.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? No? All right.
Don't hold me to that math, by the way.[1198.15][1198.15](Laughter)
I already wrote it down, Sam, too late. Thank you. Tim, are we, is there more on this one, or?
No.
Moving to the next piece of property?
Well, we can move to the next part.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Sam.
Moving on to the potential donation of Hudson Golf Course land from the Chris Hansen, from Chris Hansen and family. It's not, it's not every day that you get someone coming up to an organization and offering to donate land. So the school district is certainly in a nice position here, and we want to extend our thanks and our gratitude for the Chris Hansen family coming forward with this potential offer. One of the things that is important to note, when we look at the timeline and how things have developed, we did talk with a representative of the Hudson Golf Course, of the owners of the Hudson Golf Course, about purchasing up to 90 acres of land previously. And during that, during those discussions, the subject of a donation of land never came up. It wasn't until later, actually, we met last week with the owners and discussed in a little more detail their new offer to donate land. So, yeah, a nice, very nice position to be in. When we look at the offer, the potential offer on the table in its current form, there are several items that do need to be addressed going forward. So everyone understands the encumbrances surrounding the donation and the obligations, because, you know, anybody taking the land will have obligations going forward. Some of the things that we need to look at and identify is really the exact parcel. And we've got a map up on the back, and I'm going to outline. If you look at, it's roughly kind of a D shape. So it'll be running, the course runs down along here and up to the north. And so it's that D shape. And for point of reference, this is Target, the white area there. Carmichael Road is here, and then Cooley Road is down here. And roughly, if you take the D shape of the property and cut across it, cut it in half, we're most likely looking at an area up in here that would be donated. Looking at that area, and again, this, it's an approximate area. This hasn't, this has not been exactly identified. And that is one of the things that we need to know, because we do need to know with the exact parcel, we're going to need to be able to move forward and do additional study, just like we have with any of the parcels of land that we've looked at along the way. And there are certainly different restrictions. There's a restriction on the land itself, that it be kept as a golf course. There's another eight years remaining on that restriction. That would have to be addressed. There is a, there are access points to the property that, that current, that section up in the north, there isn't access up there currently. So that would have to be discussed, and those discussions would involve other entities. It would involve Mr. Hansen, it would involve the city, most likely, and other entities as we move forward. We also have potential DNR restrictions. In the northern half, there are some pretty substantial topography changes. And so we also have to know, going forward, what the DNR's view is and what their regulations state regarding any kind of disturbance of natural slopes. And so those are, those are some of the things that need to be addressed. In addition, we have sewer capacity questions that would need to be answered, and that would be through the city. Right now, it's zoned, the property's zoned as recreational. The rezoning would have to be, it would have to be changed to commercial zoning. Going back to the sewer capacity, it's designed as, designed and used as a golf course. Putting a, putting a school site on there would add to the volumes of sewage to be treated. So those are additional questions that have to be answered. So just to give you an idea of the different things that, going forward, we need to have a better idea of. And currently, Mr. Hansen is working and meeting with the city and with the county, and he talks about his development plans for the land. So we, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern until we know a little bit more of the detail of what the outcome of those discussions are. And then, at that point, once we know what part of, what portion of the land is going to be donated, we can start to do our work on it, start to do our due diligence, just like we do on any of the other properties. But again, we certainly want to thank the Chris Hansen family for the offer. Any questions?
Questions?
Madam President, what's the timeline, Tim? Or what, when will we expect to hear back from Mr. Hansen on his research and conversations with the cities and DNR and the other regulatory bodies?
I don't, we don't have a specific timeline at this point. We just, we're keeping in contact with Mr. Hansen and his representative to try and get continually, try and get updates as we go. I expect at some point in time, when Mr. Hansen gets to a point where he's comfortable, he'll be able to give us some additional information on timelines.
How about neighbors on the west side of the parcel? Do they have any deed restrictions, or, you know, that whole neighborhood that bought their property because they thought they were going to be nestled up against a golf course and now might be next to a school?
There are, there are some restrictions. There's possible land that, as we understand it in a general sense, now, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily want to be quoted, but I guess I probably will be. There are, there are some, there are some restrictions in the northern half of the property, and I'll probably leave it to be general at this point, because we don't have a lot of specific information.
Thank you.
Tim, in regards to the timeline, I think we made it clear to the Hansons that we are moving forward with the referendum, and we're under obligation to do that, of course, and we want to do that. Whether that's in February or April, that'll be the determination, December, December's board meeting.
Actually, tonight.
Today, it'll be today, good. Oh, good. So, but I think it's important that he understands that our intention is to have the information as soon as possible so that we can do comparisons, in a sense, between these two properties that we're, that we're now considering, I guess, as well. So do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure, very shortly. And we did convey that in our meeting with Mr. Hansen. Yeah.
Oops. Goodness. I just wanted to add to that, that I was in conversation with Representative Mr. Hansen yesterday and had affirmation of exactly that, that they were moving forward and hoped to be able to identify, at least generally, a little more specifically, the parcel itself. And they were talking about a week, so hopefully that will come to pass. So we really certainly appreciate this generous offer, and we also appreciate Mr. Hansen's efforts to move forward in, as quickly as he can, to get us the information that we would need, the Tom just talked about.
Any other questions? Mark?
Madam President, just, I guess, well, just to comment. One of my questions I had, I guess, I really basically had answered, and that is the fact is right now, we're dealing with sort of a hypothetical 60, 65 acres, right? It has not been clearly identified, but is that sort of the round number we're looking at? Which, as I recall, even under perfect circumstances, would be a minimal size for a secondary school. Am I right on that?
Right. Yeah. 60 to 65 is a minimum. And that's assuming that, you know, you've got now, in that example, you've got flat land. It's a very efficient piece of property. You don't have a lot of land taken away with right-of-way easements, you know, assuming stormwater runoff is an adequate size. Again, there are a lot of different variables that have to be committed for those things. And so assuming that lower end, 60 to 65 acres, that's a very efficient piece of property.
Right. And that's my recollection as well. And I know the golf course presents tremendous, you know, topographical And I, and I know the golf course presents tremendous, you know, topographical challenges among, among many. I mean, I, I myself am also very appreciative of Mr. Hansen and his donation. I guess I'm probably less than optimistic, you know, some of these, these hurdles, the deed restrictions, the DNR issues, sewage capacity, access, these are not, you know, trifling issues. I mean, I think they're, they're, they're huge. I guess I would even go a bit out on a limb is to suggest there's a possibility that this may not be suitable for a school site of, of any sort. And that's just my personal opinion, just reflecting on what I've, I've seen here. It certainly is an attractive parcel for all kinds of development, but I, but I really, I really do wonder with, with the hurdles that really have to be overcome, you know, whether it really would work for the Hudson School District. But again, my, that's my personal opinion.
Pat?
Well, I was just wondering, would it be big enough for a grade school? I mean, I don't see that it can be for a secondary, unless we buy more land.
You know, the areas that Tim just talked about, that we need to research and study, are the same areas that we would look at and have looked at, at any of the sites that we've considered prior to this time, prior to coming forward with a purchase agreement for St. Croix Meadows. So, once we have more information, we'll be able to look at the specific parcel and determine what the usability of that site is, whether it's for an elementary school, larger secondary school, or, or what it is.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Certainly thanks to Chris Hansen for his generous offer. And we will look forward to more information, so that we can make a better decision. All right. Diana, there's citizens' requests to speak.
Thank you.
Right, we have a request to speak from Roy Schoberg. Roy, if you would step forward to the microphone and, for the record, state your name and address, and then you're free to address the board.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Roy Schoberg. I live at eleven oh eight Vine Street, right next to the high school. Lift this up. Well, I just wanted to say that I came in a little bit late, but what wonderful athletic programs we have going on here. I also wanted to acknowledge that the teachers are just absolutely fantastic and that they make our, our school look very good. But that won't even happen without strong leadership. So, I wanted to commend the board for taking on the tough stuff and to put up with all the outcries from our citizens. It's not every day that you're personally attacked, that you have to listen to a mean-spirited talk and discussion. But your service is appreciated to this town, and we hope that as you make these tough decisions ahead, you know that there's people that are out there, like myself, that support you. So, I just hats off to your volunteerism. And even if you're paid, I don't know if you're paid enough to put up with the personal attacks that sometimes come at you. So, again, thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, Roy.
Thanks, Roy. All right. We are in the topics for action section of the agenda, folks. And the first item is St. Croix Meadows land purchase. First, the financing plan, and then we'll talk about a referendum date.
Okay. We're gonna have Brian Brewer from Baird make his way up front here. And we've been working with Brian on the financing plan for St. Croix Meadows. And the finance committee also received a report and discussion about that plan. And Brian's gonna give you a little bit of background information to start out with and, and then get into the financing plan and what, what that looks like. So, with that, Brian, I'll let you take it away.
Good evening.
All right.
Button up. Close. All right. Good evening. Good to see everyone again. As Tim mentioned, the, the first summary in your board packet is just some, some summary background data that I review in helping to create some assumptions for the financing plan that we'll discuss next. A lot of this data will be reviewed for you, so I won't spend very much time on it. But it, it does factor in, so I wanted to go through it with you briefly. If we can go to the first page. This chart just shows the historical trend over the last fifteen years or so of the revenue limit membership within the district, which has been a steadily, steadily increasing figure. The second page is another membership or enrollment figure, and this is the equalization aid membership. The difference between the two is the, the revenue limit is a three-year rolling average. This is a one-year comparison. So, this, this, along with the next page, which is your equalized valuation trend, which is, you know, a popular topic over the last few years, these, you, you know these data points over the last eight years, high double-digit growth through the oh-four, oh-five, oh-six time period, and then negative growth through the oh-nine, ten, and eleven period. That's averaged out to about three-point-eight percent. And currently, your two thousand and eleven property valuation within the district is a, a little shy of three-point-three billion in property value. So, equalization aid, or equalization membership and property valuation are the two key determinants for the next page, which is the percentages at which the school district is reimbursed for expenditures. I have a three-year trend here, and there's a lot of numbers on this page. So, I've highlighted in, in the shading, the, the key topics. Back in oh-nine, ten, your percentages were sixty-four percent, forty-five, and then negative seventeen. The key one is the negative seventeen. That, that figure is based on how property wealthy you are per member, per, per student. The negative means you are seventeen percent above the state average. Okay? Fast forward to this year, that number has dropped to a negative five percent. And so, what that means is the combination of your increasing enrollment, coupled with the, the reduced property value, has made you less property wealthy per student, in the eyes of this formula, such that you don't lose as much aid on each new dollar spent. In fact, the other thing I'd like to highlight on this page is, is a little bit lower, where you see, again, the shaded boxes. In oh-nine, ten, there was, there was a zero in the total additional cost below the maximum ceiling. Basically, the fact that you were at zero meant that the district spent it, through the primary aid category into the secondary, and then even into the final reimbursement category, which is the negative seventeen percent. In the last two years, however, because of the expenditure controls that, that this board has implemented, as well as the continued growth in enrollment relative to the state average, you, you have not spent into that final category. So, it's, this is another metric at which you can show that you are among the lowest-spending school districts on a per-member basis. So, again, a lot of numbers here, and it's hard to feel and understand that, that you are, you know, improving in the aid formula, coming off a year where you received a negative ten percent reduction, or a ten percent reduction in the total aid that was felt across the state. To put that in perspective, there were three hundred and eight districts out of the four hundred and twenty-five that reached that ten percent reduction. So, you're not alone, which, again, I know doesn't make you feel any better, but this is a backdrop for one of the assumptions that we need to factor into the future impact and, and local levy impact of a, a long-term financing that might be associated with the, the St. Croix Meadows referendum. So, we can move to the next page. Again, this is, this is a chart that you've seen in the past. The bars at the bottom represent the, the school district's total school mill rate. And then the line at the top is the K-12 average. So, in all but one year, you've been below the state K-12 average, which, again, is something that you know and, and work hard at achieving each year. We can move to the next. This is also something you know. This is just comparative mill rate data with some, some neighboring school districts. We can go ahead and move to the next. This is up here primarily just to show you that when you're going to access authority to borrow additional debt, one of the questions is, is how, what is our statutory debt limit? It's defined at ten percent of your total property value within the district. So, your total capacity currently is three hundred and twenty-nine million. As of the end of this year, you, you will have thirty-one million outstanding. So, you have significant capacity to bring on the new debt associated with this land purchase. And then, the last couple pages, I won't spend a lot of time on, but the, these are your detailed issue-by-issue debt repayment schedules that ultimately help Tim build the, the expenditure budget and, and create the levy for both Fund Thirty-Nine, and then the final page is Fund Thirty-Eight. Okay? So, we'll revisit that in the, the next handout. Any questions on that material while she's transitioning the, the slides? Okay. This, this is, this will be the first page. Yeah, that's. Okay. So, this first slide is, again, just some historical trend data to give you a perspective of where we are in history. This is a, a yield curve chart of the U.S. Treasury rates. It's from a one-year up to a thirty-year rate. And really, this is here simply to, to give you some perspective on where interest rates have been over the last fifty years. We've talked about this quite a few times, as you've utilized this low-interest rate environment to refinance existing pre-approved referendum debt to reduce the, the interest costs and thereby the, the debt levy associated with, with the referendum. This just shows you that not only are we still in a very favorable environment, historically speaking, you know, over the last couple months, we've been establishing some new lows as well, as a result of all of the uncertainty, not only in our, in our local economy and national economies, but global economies that are, that are struggling right now as well. So, it's a backdrop to say that making a long-term decision about purchasing an asset that will benefit this district for many years to come, to do it at a time when the, the cost of financing, or the interest cost, is, is at or near lows that we've seen in the, the past fifty years. So... So, some of the key assumptions that go into this, this example financing and tax impact that we'll talk about, it's a, we're assuming a, a spring referendum. The, we're assuming that you would utilize general obligation tax-exempt municipal bonds. The reason being is that, that financing tool gets you to your lowest cost of funds. We're assuming that you would utilize your, your AA1 credit rating, as we discussed when I was here this summer. That is one notch off of the highest category that Moody's Investor Service assigns to local school districts and municipalities. So, that, that factors in heavily in lowering the cost of financing in a, in a referendum financing like this. Estimated issuance date would be in May to adhere to the purchase contract, should, should the referendum be approved, with first payment starting in two thousand and thirteen. So, that would give you time to levy for it in, in November and make your first payment the following year. Planning, planning rates here, we, we've assumed current market rates plus a full percentage point higher, mainly because with rates as low as they are, and you saw the chart, it, rates have been and will continue to move up and down during the referendum process and, and up until you, you were able to finalize financing. So, we wanted to use something that was conservative for planning purposes, such that by the time you get there, you can meet what you've been talking to the community about. So, we did that. State equalization aid impact, as we talked about, your October fifteenth certification showed a negative five percent on, on additional expenditures over and above the current. So, that's how we've run the financing plan, is, is assuming that you would lose that five percent on any additional expenditures over and above your current level. Equalization, or equalized property value is what is used to determine the mill rate impact. As, as we showed in the previous slides, you've been up and down over the last eight years or so. Right now, we have this modeled out at a zero percent, just for lack of a better projection. Over time, that will, you know, maybe you go down another year and then back up another year. So, so over time, the zero percent should be a conservative estimate, given your location and, and the makeup of your district. The, and the tax impact is shown over the current referendum-approved debt levy. And right now, we're, we're utilizing a twenty-year debt structure, since the, the useful life of the land will, will stretch well beyond twenty years. There's some benefits in, into using the historically low rates now to, to pay off the debt later. And then, should there be other, other financings, you know, over time, and, you know, as rates normalize over the next, you know, five, ten years, use the shorter amortization to be able to pay off higher costing debt sooner. So, it's a long-range vision at, at this asset. So, if we'll go to the final page, this is a visual of your referendum-approved debt payments. So, the blue bars represent those last couple of pages of the previous handout. It's the, the remaining payments on the pre-approved or referendum debt issues. In two thousand and twelve, we, we stepped down from two thousand and eleven, and we are, are, have the debt structure to where you'll step down from two thousand and twelve into thirteen through seven, or through sixteen. And then you'll start stepping down in seventeen, and then again in eighteen, quite significantly. And that, that's simply a function of the referendum-approved debt that was approved in the nineties. You're, you're reaching the final few years of those debt repayments. Okay? So, in an effort to minimize the additional tax impact that the taxpayers from two thousand and thirteen through sixteen would bear, we've, we've structured this refinancing plan to have interest only during those first four years, or all of the early years, and put the majority of the principal payment in the later years, in this, in this example. In doing that, the estimated mill rate increase, with all the assumptions we discussed earlier, is a, is nine cents per thousand. So, point zero nine per thousand. And what that means on some sample property values, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar property, that would add thirteen dollars and fifty cents to the total tax bill. So, that's for the year that, that would add that amount. For a two hundred thousand dollar property, it would be eighteen dollars for the year. And then, for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property, it'd be twenty-two dollars and fifty cents of, of an increase for the year, starting with two thousand and thirteen. Okay? Questions on how this is laid out? Again, you know, a- as this district has moved through referendums, you've, you've set your debt repayments utilizing the, the limitations with state statutes and ideally tried to use the debt structure to minimize the, the new levy and new impact for the local taxpayers. Trying to balance, you know, the needs of, of continuing to grow for the future, but with the, the realities of the world we live in today. So, that's what this plan, as it's currently laid out, attempts to do. So...
Thank you, Brian. Other questions from the board?
Yes.
Pat?
Madam President. Okay. The two hundred thousand dollar property, you say it'd be increase of eighteen dollars. Is that per year, starting, well, it goes through, starting next year is eighteen dollars? Okay. And then, when it, when it comes, okay, when it started lowering in two thousand and seventeen, then we increase with paying, so it will actually stay, we won't really look at decreasing anything at that point, right? I mean...
Well, right now, if you, if you look at the chart and you see the step up from twelve into thirteen, the nine cents is reflective of that initial step. Okay?
Okay.
And then, actually, in fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, it, it actually steps back down a little bit. So, it'd actually be slightly less than eighteen. But I, for ease of discussion, the, the maximum impact is, is that initial year? Do you see that? The green bar? The green bars?
Oh, the green is what, this new one?
The green is what would be incrementally added on, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
So in two thousand and seventeen, for just the land, it would come all the way down even further than that?
Yeah, because your other debt payments are dropping off, right?
All right.
So, yeah, right.
So that we can have money to pay.
Are there other questions for Brian?
Madam President, just a quick clarification. On the rate that we used, we used a rate that we felt was conservative based on assumptions that rates could go up, but we will qualify for the best rate that we can get at the time that we go to referendum or close.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what we base the rate on is current market rates for a AA1 credit quality, general obligation, tax-exempt, plus one hundred basis points in every one of those years that, you know, as we've talked about in the past, you know, you have a different rate for each year. So we're using the one hundred, you know, one percent increase as the high end of movement. You know, the way rates have moved in the past few years, that should be plenty conservative. However, again, I don't want to tell you and promise to you that, you know, it's conservative enough, given how low we currently are, and we still have some world issues that are, you know, we get new, breaking news every day. But yes, at the time we go to market, we will package all of the information, go out, go back to the credit rating agencies, get the highest credit rating assignment you can get, and then take that offering to the investors to try and get the then-current best package of rates available.
Thank you. Brian.
So Brian, is the, so the white space there below the current, the red dotted line is kind of our debts, our current kind of debt service, right?
Correct, yeah. What I did was the red dotted line across the top of the page just indicates where the two thousand and twelve debt levy is.
So based off our levy, you know, that's the debt service we're funding right now?
Correct.
And, which goes into our, which goes into our total levy, that and our operating expenses.
Correct.
So the idea here is all this white space here is the ability that, you know, as we look to a long-term secondary solution, there's a potential to kind of use that white space. It's still costing our taxpayers, but the idea is to basically kind of flatline the debt service levy so that we can, we can basically look at taxpayers at two thousand and thirty-two still investing in a school that they would be using.
Saying that a different way, it's, we, as the previous investments from the nineteen nineties referendums are paid in full, that creates an opportunity for you to evaluate other long-range facility needs and try to use those drops while minimizing the need to exceed the current investment for long-term capital items and large, major facility improvements. So, yes, the white space under the dotted line will give you an ability to try and minimize the additional amount of levy that would be allocated to those purposes.
Any other questions? Tom.
Brian, one of the assumptions that you mentioned was a zero base growth on the equalized value of housing. So I guess I'm assuming that that's not a big risk, that's a conservative approach because of the last three years of trending has been down in valuation. So can you talk a little bit more about that, how you arrived at that and why you're confident of that?
Over the repayment term, I'm confident that zero is a conservative estimate for this district and where you're located and how, you know, your growth prospects.
That's based in the life of the term.
Where I'm less confident is next year. You know, is there another year of a negative? Is there going to be two more years of a, I don't, I don't know that, and I don't know that anyone has a good way to answer that. So that's why I put it in a key assumptions, is to be clear to say, this is modeled assuming a zero. If, when we go to present the materials and the information, the tax impacts leading up to a referendum vote, you know, if you want to model it assuming a negative one or a negative two percent, we can do that as well. It's just this set of example financing circumstances used a zero. So that would be open to more discussion, you know, leading up to that time.
Any final questions for Brian? No, thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Great, thank you.
All right, board members, so we, because we're in the topics for action section, we've heard a presentation from Brian regarding a potential financing plan for the acquisition of the St. Croy Meadows property, and I would look for a motion to approve moving forward with the plan as it's been presented as part of the overall package.
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we are, let's see, Mary, the land purchase referendum date.
We have been communicating to our community that we would consider a referendum either in the February primary or in the April general election. So with further consideration, and we recommend to you that the April third, two thousand and twelve general election be used for the referendum date for the purchase of the St. Croy Meadows dog track. There are primarily three reasons that the administration is recommending that date. First of all, it gives the district the most time to satisfy the conditions in the purchase agreement, move forward with that. Tim Erickson has shared a timeline for moving forward with each of satisfying those conditions. Two, I believe it was the Facilities and Grounds Committee?
Yes.
And that timeline is best met with an April date. Secondly, we know with informal information as well as a previous survey that our community supports a regular election date, and certainly a general election is an election that the district doesn't have the same cost as a primary election, where we would either bear the full cost if there were no other entities involved in that primary election, or we would split the cost with the entities that were involved. So again, this would be a general election. And then lastly, certainly the addition of the proposed donation of the Hudson Golf course, this would give us extra time to obtain more information about that site, specific information that we can evaluate for the suitability of the site for a future school, and compare that to the St. Croy Meadows site for a second, a future secondary school. So with approval of this date, we would prepare a resolution for the referendum to be acted upon by the board at least forty-five days prior to April third, which means that we would anticipate that the February board meeting would be the time that you would take action on the resolution for the referendum. The date, the general election of April third was endorsed by the Finance Committee.
All right, board members, so we have a recommendation from the administration for a referendum date for the purchase of the St. Croy Meadows land as April third, two thousand and twelve. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion by Brian, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Pat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, April third, two thousand and twelve. Corey McIntyre, pupil nondiscrimination self-evaluation report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few quick comments regarding the process and findings of this self-evaluation, and you see the executive summary in your materials. The Wisconsin Administration Code in DPI requires that every school district conduct this evaluation every five years and prepare a written report regarding the status of nondiscrimination and equality of educational opportunity. So what you see in your materials is a summary of three data elements. First, methods, practices, curriculum, and materials used in counseling, trends and patterns in awarding scholarships and other forms of recognition and achievement, and lastly, participation trends and patterns of students in athletic, extracurricular, and recreational activities. So just a couple of quick findings and recommendations that I'd like to highlight. Overall, the district shows evidence of exceptional and substantial compliance, exceptional athletic and elder extracurricular programs, as well as strong practices and equitable provision of scholarships, awards, and other student recognition. The counseling program, the results indicated practices that identify and develop ways to ensure that every student is provided with optimal learning environment that leads to higher learning levels. And lastly, participation in athletics and extracurriculars is generally and reasonably balanced throughout the district. Just a couple pockets of exceptions, where we see some trends that we actually probably would have anticipated, where in some cases, there are more females participating than males, less participation of minority students, and less participation of special education students. So as far as recommendations go, the report indicates that we, as a district, need to continue to develop our systematic practice each year of maintaining this disaggregated data so we can look at it on a regular basis and evaluate that data and address areas with less participation. Also, to continue to provide professional development for our staff as far as effective strategies and working with a diverse student population as it relates to cultural competence and diversity. So again, overall, the results are very strong and positive for the district, and once approved, the report will be posted on the district website for public viewing. I'll entertain any questions.
Are there questions for Corey on this? Okay, so the Learning and Program Development Committee heard this report last night, and would recommend that the board move to accept the report as presented. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I will move to accept the report as presented.
All right, thank you, Mark. Motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Corey. We'll look forward to the next one in two thousand and sixteen. All right, school calendars, Nancy.
Yes, the administration, along with the Personnel Committee of the Board, are bringing forward tonight two years of calendars, the two thousand and twelve and thirteen school year and the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, to ask for your approval. As you might recall, in mid-September, the Board approved a provision of the handbook, school calendar, and teacher contract days. And each of these new calendars increases the teacher contract days from one ninety to one ninety-two, and student learning days from one seventy-eight to one hundred and eighty. If we look at, in the Board book, the calendar two thousand and twelve, thirteen, and we can, I can point out some changes to accommodate this provision of the handbook, and those are mirrored in the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen calendar. But in the two thousand and twelve, thirteen calendar, the extra student days are reflected October twenty-sixth, which is presently, in the current calendar, a parent-teacher conference day that will become a student learning day. And there's an additional student learning day reflected June twelfth. So we have added a day in the first semester, or actually, first trimester or quarter, and one at the end of the year. The other thing, the other change in the calendar, I think that's worth mentioning, because we've been used to for some time, the teachers' professional development in October, usually the third week, usually Thursday and Friday, and families have been used to that time for vacations as well. So there's kind of a longstanding pattern. But you'll note in the proposed two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen calendar that October fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth would be evening parent-teacher conferences to be determined. The effort will be made to schedule elementary conferences on a different night than middle and high school conferences, and that's to accommodate families that have children at different levels. And on occasion, our teachers, who are conferencing one evening but need to visit with the teachers of their children another evening. So that is a change that we think will be good for the community, and then for the convenience of parents who, and families who have been used to plan family vacations those two days in October, there will still be that opportunity. The other change you'll note down in the summary, one floating day for professional development. There have been, this is still, there are still seven professional development days in the teacher's contract, but there will be one, what we call a floating day, and that is, is an equivalent, seven and a half hours of professional development, pre-approved through the principals. And an example of that would be a teacher's participation in summer academy that the district develops and offers and encourages teachers to take part in. So the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen calendar is a mirror of that, it just moves, it just moves the days forward. This, these calendars have been developed through the teacher advisory a couple of times, and also through our district leadership team, including the principals, and so we bring, and then the Personnel Committee most recently. So we ask for your approval, unless you have questions.
Are there any questions for Nancy? Nancy, I have one random question. I'm assuming these calendars are the ones that would be posted on the district website once they're approved?
Yes, they would be.
So is the energy holiday new?
No, the energy holiday has been in the calendar for several years now, I think four or five years.
Shame on me. What is an energy holiday?
At least, I think it's been at least four or five years.
At least four or five years, yes. It was a concept introduced by Mary.
Yes, we shut down the building, and we shut down the building, we don't have athletic activities going on, there are no activities going on in the district. And with that shutdown, we're also shutting down heat, we're not using lights, and we're saving energy costs with that.
All right, thank you. Novel.
Yep. Not uncommon in other school district calendars.
You know, I'd probably have to calculate that on the one day, yeah.
All right, thank you. So if there is a motion to approve the two thousand and twelve, twenty thirteen, and two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school calendars as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? School calendars have been approved. Thanks, Nancy. Employee handbook, retirement pay, support employees eligible to retire before July one, two thousand and sixteen.
You might recall that last spring, in fact, the Board did improve a similar provision in the teacher-employee handbook, and we're bringing forward something similar to that for our support employees. The retirement pay for sick leave, accumulated and unused sick leave, is not new. It is a, it is a benefit that has been provided for many years to our support employees. So that part of this is not new. But this particular provision, similar to the teachers', applies only, for now at least, to those support employees who would be eligible to retire before July first, two thousand and sixteen, for the same reasons that we put some parameters, or you put some parameters around the retirement benefits for teachers, and that is that individuals, employees like this in the district and close to retirement have relied on this as part of their overall retirement plan. And so that's the same reason as for the teachers. There is a difference in the sick leave buyout from what the support employees have been used to, and that is that the district would pay this accrued amount out over two years versus all at once, giving, again, the district the flexibility for planning, a little bit more flexibility for planning during these financially difficult times, but still providing that benefit to our eligible support employees. And then there is recommended in the provision, the statement that the Board would consider retire- retirement benefits beyond 2016 at a later date, and of course, the content of that would be to be determined. And this has also gone through the Personnel Committee of the Board.
Questions for Nancy on this? And Nancy, I assume that this also was, was this authored in conjunction or at least reviewed by the teacher advisory group?
Oh, I'm glad you bring that up. It wasn't reviewed by the teacher advisory committee, but Tim and I offered recently two meetings. We met the end of last school year, and we offered two meetings with our, all of our support employees, one after school, like four o'clock, and then another at 6:30 in the evening. And we did have discussions with them, and that was fairly recent, and this emerged as a priority for them.
Are there other questions for Nancy?
One Nancy, what was the general, you know, feeling from the teachers regarding this information? I mean, how was it received?
The support employees? Or the teachers?
Teachers, yeah.
Well, this wasn't specifically part of the teacher advisory discussion, this is the support employees.
They're the ones that you, that you-
That we met with recently, yes.
So what was their?
Well, this, this is what, this is something that's very important to them. And also, it's really of a benefit to the district greatly, in that we certainly do not want our employees, teachers, or other employees to be using regularly their sick leave. You know, it's, we want, it's not, we'd rather have our trained and experienced employees on duty rather than substitutes. And so we have an investment in that as well.
I'm sorry, I'm sure I wasn't very clear on that.
Yeah.
What I'm wondering is, is that, how was it received? I mean, what, is there a positive feeling about this?
The fact of meeting, and, yes. Yes, and Tim was there too, and we had, we had two, I thought, very cordial meetings with our support employees.
Yes, yeah. And, you know, there are a variety of issues discussed, and like Nancy said, this was one of the, one of the issues we heard some concern on their part from, and as being an important piece for them as well.
One thing that they did mention, some time ago, the Board did approve the leaves of absence for support employees, as well as teachers, but for support employees. And when we met with them earlier, would have been, I think, early June perhaps, that was one of the priorities then. And so we did hear from the individuals attending those meetings that they really appreciated the fact that the Board moved ahead to confirm their leaves of absence.
Barb? Is this something that they always had, or is this something new for our support employees?
This is something that they've always had.
Okay, and they just want to?
Just under a different format, under terms and conditions versus a handbook.
Okay.
Yeah, except for the differences that I pointed out tonight.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve this addition to the employee handbook?
I so move.
Motion by Pat, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, Nancy, is authorization to, for the administration to develop and implement employee handbook content.
Yes. You know, the Board has approved some very major provisions of the employee handbooks at this point. There are some other provisions that will need to come to the Board, like any additional retirement provisions, compensation structures, evaluation structures, those sorts of things. But for the most part, the handbook is, there are sections of it just required by law or regulation, and some of it is just solely administrative procedure or forms. And as, so there really is no discretion, you know, necessarily that the Board would have for those parts of it that are governed by law or regulation. Some of it is also policy that you've also already adopted. And then the rest of it are forms that you would not want to, we would suggest not want to engage in acting upon and then revising and all of that. So the request here from the administration is that the Board authorize the administration to develop, implement, and revise as necessary those provisions of the employee handbook required by law or regulation, and those provisions which are solely administrative procedures and forms. And this motion would be with the understanding that the Board would have the ongoing opportunity to review such provisions of the employee handbook through the Resource Center of Diligent Board Books. So as we would put this material in place, you would have the opportunity and the authority at any time to call something to our attention and to bring it to the Board table or to a committee.
Are there questions for Nancy on this? Brian?
Just one comment, so I don't have issue with that all, Nancy. But I do, I do, I think we are seeing some stuff, just because of the nature of how this got done with the Budget Repair Bill and everything else, especially when it gets to retirements, I feel like we're just getting everything kind of in these, kind of, I think just by the nature of it, kind of in parts.
Yep.
Is, I think it's important for me as a Board member, as we move forward to next year, is to get a more collective look at the retirement benefits and kind of our, kind of our strategy around there, and in a comprehensive look versus these little silos of information, which, so I'm just making a comment on that, that would be helpful for me as a Board member, so.
Okay. Are there other questions for Nancy on this? Nancy, I had one, and that was, it would be helpful for me, has there been something that has come up recently that you think would be a perfect example of the reason why this would be an appropriate motion for the Board to make this evening? Or is there one pending perhaps, that you can see?
Well, an example, an example of an administrative procedure in form would be our payroll procedures are generally part of the handbook, and there are forms associated with that. Laws and regulations, there's multiple, there's whole sections of the handbook that relate to family medical leave, military leave, you know, that we really have no discretion over.
All right, thank you. That's helpful for me.
Yeah, and I want to comment on the silos. Just have to comment, there's two ways of doing this, and, you know, one is to just, you know, put it together and adopt it. And many school districts have done that, they have done it that way. We have, we have chosen to do it in silos, actually, so that we could collaborate with our teachers through the teacher advisory system, and then also to meet on some basis with our support employees. It's not easy to do it this way, and I'm sure it feels kind of very fragmented to you, but it will come together, and we will not be doing, doing this every year.
Yeah, but if I could just comment to that, my challenge though, is we talk about, we talk about teacher pay, or pay, and then we, we have, that's a separate conversation, and we talk about retirement. To me, it's a comprehensive look at pay-retirement benefits.
The whole thing.
And when I hear, when I get it in one chunk here and one chunk here, you need to look at it in a collective, in kind of a collective whole. That's my biggest challenge right now.
Yep.
I see that.
I think we would share that challenge, knowing that we're in a transitional period, and moving forward with a new evaluation system that's being regulated by the state level and moving that forward to a new salary structure, which could include retirement benefits as well, is something that is new territory for us. And so I appreciate your patience, as we are patient too, to try to work through these two years, and then we'll work, we certainly will be working together with the Board, both big picture, which you're talking about, Brian, as well as specifics to that new structure that's coming. We're just trying to get through the details of transition right now, and I know you know that. The one thing I'd add, because Nancy talked about these handbooks that districts have approved in total, they are now in their second or third revision of those handbooks because the Board approved them in total, and so any change that occurred to any language, anything in it, the Board has to take action on. And that's what we're trying to eliminate here. Things of substance, yes, but not things that really shouldn't take your time.
One thing that we will assure you of is that when we get to those items of substance that we'll bring back and review the total picture and try to put it together, so that you see the different pieces together and can react, react to the total picture.
All right, thanks Nancy. So there is some motion language that is attached to the agenda that was on your tables, if there is someone who would like to make that motion.
Madam President, I would move to authorize the administration to develop, implement, and revise as necessary those provisions of the employee handbook required by law or regulation, and those provisions which are solely administrative procedures and forms. This motion is with the understanding that the Board will have the ongoing opportunity to review such provisions of the employee handbook through the Resource Center of Diligent Board Books.
Okay, motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Appointing delegates, and appointing our delegate and alternate to the State Education Convention. The State Education Convention will occur in Milwaukee again this year, January 18th through 20th. We know both Lynn Robson and Pat German are planning to attend on behalf of the Board. We believe Dan Turnahoy will also attend the conference this year as well. My recommendation is that we, as a Board, appoint Lynn Robson as our delegate and Pat German as our alternate, and unless there is a different point of view, if someone would be willing to make that a formal motion.
So move.
Motion by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, and thank you again for your service, folks. We are to the consent agenda item, and if so, if there is someone who would be willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items and read the language on disbursements.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,728,672.69.
Motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent slate is approved. Committee reports. First on that list is facilities and grounds, Tom.
Facilities and grounds, committee met on October 24th, and all the members were present. In addition to that, Tim Erickson, Jim Stasko, and Mary Bowen-Eggbrodden were present as well. We had four agenda items. The first one that we discussed was regarding the district's, District Community Education and Booster Group use of facilities. We are experiencing an ever-increasing demand on our facilities. And so we reviewed and reaffirmed the priority and policies of usage and access to those facilities, and they, they have to do with, the first priority is being those, those school activities, school events that are by nature closely sponsored by the school, and then it goes out from there into nonprofit organizations within the community and so forth. We can give you the whole list if you'd like, but that's basically the gist of what we discussed. And so we're anticipating that as we're experiencing more demand and anticipating from our own intention to grow our community education programs, that we're going to be needing to revisit this and maybe address it in the community, so. Second agenda item was a review of the district capital projects. They totaled $650,000 in total for the year 2011-12 fiscal year. It's good to report that our final secure entry, entrance project will be completed at the ASC the summer of 2012, meaning all the other school buildings have now been secured, which is a comforting feeling. I think that's basically the highlight of it. We do, we have completed a couple of functions in this budget already, saving $40,000 to it at this point, but we do have a contingency of $250,000, which is included in that $650,000 number, so. Those are the highlights of that. Third item was timeline for the purchase contract conditions for the land, much of which has been discussed tonight. One of those items was the approval of the, the appointment of the referendum date, along with the other things we've talked about tonight, building materials usability report that we heard, financing plan for the land tonight. We are completing this timeline with the anticipation that if there is approval in the referendum of April now, that we'll have a land closing around the date of June 4th.
I had one additional revision, Tom, on your report regarding secured entrances. We still are, we're working on completing all of those, but we still have High School, Willow River, Holton.
Thank you, they're in process, but they're not completed.
Yes, that's correct.
Got it, thank you. And then the final item was a review of a communications plan around how we involve and communicate to and involve and engage our community around the land purchase referendum that'll be scheduled in April. So we reviewed that, it's using a variety of tools, including website postings, Twitter, electronic, Thursday folders, you know, we'll have informal flyers, or informational flyers, excuse me. We'll have networks, we have networks around our district where we can, where we can dispense communication and information, and then of course, information sessions as well, so that we can hear from our community as well as impart information, so. That's it.
Thanks, Tom. I did have one question regarding an item on the facilities and grounds agenda, and that was on the first topic with the competing priorities for use of the school facilities. And my question, you may not be able to answer, Tom, but I'd be willing to bet that Tim or Mary perhaps could answer that, is, or Nancy, is there, is there a place where we're posting those prioritization rules that we have established as a Board? So if community members were confused about what gets first priority and what gets second priority, they would be able to review that?
You want to try and take that, Nancy, or do you want me to?
Well, I'll start. They're on the district website.
They are, okay.
Yeah, and when, when outside groups schedule, go through the scheduling process, they complete a contract, and part of that is an attachment.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Thanks Nancy. Pat?
Are they also posted of all the organizations that are using it? I mean, is that out there on the days? I think I found, I think there's a calendar out there showing who has what days and stuff too. Unfortunately, I think for the community, you have it on Tuesday, but it's really Mondays. Need to look at that.
There is, if you're referring to the community ed calendar, there is, that is on our website.
Yeah, they have it, but it's Mondays and Thursdays. It's, I mean, they have two dates, but they say Tuesday and Thursday, but the dates are Monday and-
Then Nancy can look into that.
I'll look at that, I didn't know that.
And get that correct.
That was for the community at large, it can just come in, it is under that one.
All right, thank you. The next committee report is Personnel, Mark.
Thank you Barb. Personnel Committee met October 24th. First item on our agenda was a staffing update provided by Nancy Sweet. Highlights basically, we're up a little over, this is as of October 11th, I believe, up a little over four certified staff, all for growth. But as far as the total number goes, I think we're actually down just a little under- But as far as the total number goes, I think we're actually down just a little, under one due to shifting the resources where they're needed. And Nancy does a great job at that, so continually monitoring it. And it is, it is always, as everyone knows, I know, a moving target, things do, do change, but that's where we stand as of now. We talked about the 2012 and 2013 school calendars, which we approved earlier. We addressed the compensation for educational advancement, obviously without a, a contract. Now, we wanted to address the provisions for providing additional compensation for teachers that attain benchmark credits, master's degree, as well as a stipend for a national certification. The employee handbooks, we got an update again from Nancy on the progress of that. We discussed some of those provisions and approved them earlier this evening. And closed with a, a closed session to address a confidential disciplinary matter of a specific employee.
Thanks. Questions for Mark? All right. Finance committee Lynn.
Thank you, Madam President. The finance committee met yesterday with five topics on the agenda, three of which were addressed in detail earlier in the meeting. One of the items that finance discussed, not previously discussed in tonight's meeting, was the compensation for educational advancement. Administration reported that we have completed the first cycle of the budgeted compensation for educational advancement, with the cost being $80,000 less than budgeted, which was an interim measure, as you may recall, as we worked through the details of the budget repair bill. And then the committee adjourned to closed session to prepare for negotiations with the WCEA Teachers Union.
Questions for Lynn? All right, and last committee report is learning and, Diane, are you signaling me? My lights are going off up here. Learning and Program, Learning and Program Development Committee. And we had four things on the agenda. The first thing that we talked about, Laura Love joined the committee and shared with us some of the ways that smartphones are being used in the classroom. This is feedback subsequent to a pilot that they had been running in the school. And that I would share just a couple of examples that Laura shared with us last night of, of the ways in which cell phones and smartphones are being used in the classroom. She said oftentimes they're being used to do impromptu searches on the internet for current events and news type items, that they are certainly doing some response, some response with their phones to just capture responses on a question that is posed to the classroom. Cameras are being used specifically in, in a particular art classroom so that they can showcase their art, which I think is an interesting use. Sometimes as a calculator application. For those parents who have purchased the scientific calculators, they are spendy and there is perhaps a free app on a phone, should you choose to use that. So a, a number of really, I think, creative ways. The one thing that she did share is that they're still only being used in about 10% of the classrooms, so it's still on a very limited basis at the high school. The second thing that we talked about were, are some new high school courses that the committee has recommended for approval. Those include the fourth class in our Project Lead the Way series, Mandarin Chinese Four, which would be the, you know, four years in a row where we've added that, a machine tool theory class. And finally, a project-based learning class that would be led by one of the English, our language arts instructors at the high school, so. And we did hear the report from Cory last night regarding the People Non-Discrimination Self-Evaluation Report. And then we spent a little bit of time, the committee has been working through a potential web redesign for the district, and we spent a little bit more time talking about what that might look like. We're constrained with the software that the district has invested in, so we're trying to navigate what we can do with the tools that we currently have. And that was it for Learning and Program Development. And with that, we are on the last item of the agenda, which is adjourning to a closed session. And for those guests that are with us this evening, once we adjourn to closed session, we will not be returning to open session. There will be no action items from those discussions. So if there is a board member who would be willing to make a motion using the language on the agenda.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85, parent one, parent A, to deliberate concerning a grievance hearing, parent B, parent F, to consider disciplinary data and personnel problems of specific employees, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon any person referred to in such data. Parent E, to deliberate about the purchase of property and to prepare for negotiations with the WCEA Hudson Teachers Union.
So the motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those, ah, roll call.
Bell aye.
Robson aye.
Holland aye.
Van Loon an aye.
German aye.
Kaiser shot aye.
We are adjourned to closed session, thank you.